Right now, it is a time to invest in the heart health.
At Cleveland Clinic, I'm Erica Foreman.
All rise. Oh, yea, oh, yea, oh, yea. Silence is commanded by this honorable commission. All those having business draw near.
Thank you. Will you bow your heads with me? Our Father who art in heaven, we come before thee in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, humblest and blessed to thy holy and righteous will. We thank you for the presence of your Holy Spirit as we deliberate on the business that is confirmed with Chatham County. Bless us now that we be according to your will and according to your way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You all may be seated. Please, ma'am, please, sir, check your cell phones, right, to make sure that we don't have any interruptions or roll call.
Chester A. Ellis, chairman.
Present.
Bobby Lockett, District Three, vice chairman.
Bobby.
Melinda Scott Hodge, District Two, Chairman Pro Tem.
Present.
Anthony Wayne Noah, District One. Patrick K. Farrell, District Four.
Here.
Tonya Milton, District Five.
Present.
Aaron Whiteley, District Six.
Here.
Dean Kickleiter, District Seven.
Here.
Marsha Buford, District Eight.
Here.
All right, thank you. And the only thing we have, the two items on the agenda that for this special call meeting are individual actions. Request bold approval to adopt the tax year 2025 millage resolution for the Chatham Area Transit Authority pursuant to OCGA forty-eight dash five dash thirty-two point one and board approval of submittal of the tax year 2025 property tax digest to the Georgia Department of Revenue for approval, including Form PT dash thirty-five county millage rate certificate certification and Form PT thirty-two dash one comprehension of millage rate rollback and percentage increase in property tax rate year 2025. The adopted millage rate will be one point zero five six. Is there a motion? Need a motion?
I make a motion, Chair.
Need a second?
Second.
All right, there's a property motion in second that that requests be approved. Are there any unreadiness?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this actually just keeping it the same?
Yes, it's the same that we've had it now since 2021.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out for the public.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, any other unreadiness?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
All right, so I know that this has been the same. I understand that this is the same. Now, hasn't, has there, or correct me if I'm wrong, are there entities receiving or paying into this tax, or excuse me, entities receiving service who are not paying into the millage rate?
All right, yes. The answer to your question is yes. There are parts of the county who have opted out of the transit district, all right? And they don't pay into this tax. It doesn't come from the whole county. The majority of this comes from the unincorporated areas, all right? Any other unreadiness? All right, let me state my unreadiness. Taking into consideration, we've been doing some research now since January into what we have here. And we discovered that in 2022, the CAT Board cut services and they cut services out of some of the unincorporated areas. But those unincorporated areas are still paying into this tax. Then there are municipalities that we found out that they are giving discounts to to run services in, all right? That are not paying into this tax. And so that being the case and that being the numbers we looked at, especially since it affects our unincorporated areas. What I like to do is is that I would like to amend the request for approval for the tax year 2025, all right? And what I would like to put in in place of of the amendment. Before I read that out, let me, we have, we have the attorney on the line, don't we? Attorney Martin.
Yes, it's Chairman.
Yeah, can you give, can you give me the law as it, as it states as to whose responsibility it is for public transportation here in Chatham County?
Well, per the Georgia Constitution, the nineteen eighty-three Georgia Constitution, under Article Nine, dealing with counties and municipal corporations, paragraph three of the supplemental powers that belong to the any county or municipality, number nine states' public transportation as one of the powers that a county may exercise in regards to the governing authority. So, public transportation is one that is, is a supplemental power that the county can do, given through the Georgia Constitution.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions? Any familiar, like, yes, sir.
I have a question for Attorney Martin.
Sure.
Attorney Martin, I think your camera might be turned around, sir. So, my, my question is just in regard, so if that is our, if that is our charge, if you will, how does the CAT Enabling Act, does that supersede what you just read?
No, it doesn't supersede. The CAT Enabling Act was, was an act that was specifically giving guidance in regards to how the structure of the trans, the Chatham Area Transit would be, how the board would be composed of, who would be on the board, and who would have the majority on that particular type of board. Now, as you know, that the transit, that, that is a general law, we also, and it's also, we also have the local act. And with the local act, I mean, under the Georgia Constitution, the governing authority does have the power to amend or revoke any such acts if it does impugn upon its authority. But to specifically answer your question, no, the trans, the Georgia Constitution, basically, under the supplemental power saying, says that the counties may exercise the authority to handle public transportation. The Chatham Area Transit Act gives the more detail of how you would do it.
Got it. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, does the, the local legislation state that those receiving service should be in the, included in the service district or the mil, paying the millage rate?
That is my understanding. We can, we can always brief it a little bit more to give you a specific and specific answers to that, but yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody else not need clarification? All right, let me read this now as I'm going to ask us to approve and adopt it, all right? Request bold approval to adopt the tax year 2025 millage rate resolution for the Chatham Area Transit Authority pursuant to OCGA forty-eight dash five dash thirty-two point one and board approval of submittal of the tax year property tax digest through the Georgia Department of Revenue for approval, including Form PT dash thirty-five county millage certification and Form PT thirty-two dash one confrontation of millage rate rollback and percentage decrease in property tax year 2025. The adopted millage rate will be zero point five two eight. All right, that is my amendment to what we're reading. Is there a second?
Point of order, Mrs., I think there's an existing motion on the table, on the floor.
But we're doing a substitute.
Well, in that case, I would, I would ask those who made the motion in second to accept the amendment.
They would have to, yeah, amend.
Say it again.
They would have to, what, what the commissioner said, they would have to make a motion to amend. They would have to make the motion to amend their motion to lower it to that, and the second would have to agree.
Right, that's what we're getting to. All right, so that goes to.
So for clarity, Chairman, we're modifying.
The millage rate.
To.
To rather than one point zero five six, increase to decrease to zero point five two eight.
Based on what you, you express as far as the service delivery.
Based on service delivery.
Motion modified.
My second.
All right, this is a property motion to modify. We got it clear? We, we straighten, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, if you're doing an amendment to the motion, yes.
Right, okay, say it again.
What are the ramifications of dollar wise to the Chatham Area Transit when, while this is done? What's the, what's the, what's the dollar amount at the original? And what's the dollar amount that they would receive? As currently calculated approximately.
Linda gave us that the other day. She's not here. Mike, did you, you still have that?
I, I need to go and pull that, but I don't have it with the chairman. But essentially, that cuts in half the anticipated revenue.
Yeah, that's, I'd like to know what the, I think the CAT Board sent us this request, and there should have been a dollar amount to go with it, or approximately. I know it's not perfect, but.
We didn't, we didn't get it. We didn't get a request from, did we get a request from?
We had a request on the millage rate, yes, sir.
Is that something I missed?
It's, it's attached to the agenda. It's.
Oh, oh, okay, that's. Is that the, that's the letter that, because you gave me the agenda, but then there was a letter from the, from the. The board chair?
Yes, sir.
Sent the agenda?
Yes.
Sent the, okay, that's the attachment. Yes, sir. I mean, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Is this a, this is a reduction, is that correct?
Correct.
And that reduction is because they denied services in some of the areas?
In some of the, and, and we have members in the unincorporated area who pay this tax but aren't receiving any services, all right? Their, their services were either terminated or reduced, okay? So therefore, they're paying into a tax where they don't receive service, okay?
Well, could we just eliminate the tax on those folks a hundred percent instead of?
I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how to go in and pickpocket taxes, and that's what I'm talking about. See, when, when we do these things, it's just like when we pass our millage rate. That millage rate is for the whole SSD or for the whole county or the M and O. But now, how you go in there and cut out this part and cut out that part? I don't know how to do that.
One clarification?
Yes.
Your recommendation would actually keep their budget the same.
Correct.
It would not actually reduce their budget and keep it what it was this past year, correct?
Correct, but the millage rate will change.
Exactly, so that, that's, that's what I wanted to make that point, that you were not cutting what their revenues are currently. cutting what their revenues are, are currently. You're just keeping them the same because you're doing the rollback of what it actually increased, the tax I just increased.
Correct, correct.
This is the rollback rate?
This is the.
That's what I'm trying to get at, the actual numbers. If, if this is the rollback, you know, I just, I just don't know, so that's why I'm asking. I imagine that somebody.
That's what, that's what Mike knows.
They'll find out.
Because I, I didn't bring, I didn't bring all those people, I got them on my desk, but I didn't bring them all in here.
This is the rollback rate that you're recommending, correct?
Yeah, the rollback.
Okay, thank you, that's what I thought.
Yes, sir. And, and, and honestly, here's where we are with this, alright? To spell it out in, in, in common languages. The CAT board gave Port Wentworth services, alright? When Port Wentworth opt out of the, the tax rate, right? So, the cost of that service was four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And they were only allowing them to pay four hundred thousand dollars with fifty-six thousand dollars as a deficit. So, they came to me, one, the former CEO came to wanting to know, could I, would I allow them to use some of the monies from paratransit? And I told them no, alright? Uh, paratransit funds are one thing, we fund paratransit totally, okay? That means the county commission does. And, and that, um, microtransit and other things that would have shielded the fifty-six thousand dollars was in another budget. And I asked them, please do not mix those budgets together, okay? Paratransit money is for paratransit, paratransit alone, okay? So now, now it comes up that there is a renegotiation with, um, Port Wentworth for that transit, for that service. And that price went up to four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, okay? But the actual cost is six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And so now, they're giving them an even bigger discount. What does that mean we doing? That means that the folks in the unincorporated area is going to foot that bill.
Precisely.
That's exactly what it means. Then.
And the city of Savannah, right?
City of Savannah, no.
How's that?
Because they're not paying into it. City of Savannah used to pay into what they call a SAMI.
They don't, they don't pay the same, uh?
No. City of Savannah used to pay what they call a SAMI. The SAMI was a one-dollar tax that went with the hotel motel tax. The records show us that the city has not given into SAMI since Rob Hernandez was the city manager. So, there's no money there. So then, my next question was, who's paying for the ferries? Because everybody who ride the ferry is free. Right? So therefore, the, the, the cost of the ferry rolls back to what we're doing right now. It rolls back to the unincorporated areas taking on that responsibility. City of Savannah knows are not contributing. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, for reference purposes, because I didn't see like a budget link or anything in our agenda notes, do we have access to?
I've, I've been asking.
They don't, you say.
Well, you're not, now, you, let, let's get it good. You know, I asked for it week before last, because, oh, last week I was in the hospital, alright? I did not get it. I did not, I do not have a budget from them at all. Alright, to answer your question. Yes, sir.
Look, Chairman, it's my understanding that the city of Savannah does pay for this, because when the entire bus service was structured back many years ago, the city of Savannah opted in for the service. And all of the other smaller municipalities opted out. So, the unincorporated area was opted into the service area.
Correct.
As well as the tax area. And all the citizens of the city of Savannah were also, by their own elected government, opted in. So, they do pay that tax, the, the same milage rate that were approved and goes on the tax bills to the people that live in Savannah. Also, that's been my understanding for, for years, that that's the way it's actually funded.
Alright, let me ask the manager, knows if that's true? Because I, I can only, I can only give you the information that was given to me.
Right.
The city paid for the DOT.
Well, that, that's.
Maybe that's what the SAMI was for, the, was.
The, the SAMI was supposed to be for the ferry.
Right, that was some additional things they kicked in years ago.
Right.
Like, the city once paid, um, a decent amount, and I don't know if they're still doing it or not. But they were paying for the little shuttle bus to run around downtown for free.
That's the DOT.
I think they still have a separate contract for that, but I'd have to ask the executive director if he could give you a more clarification on that.
Okay, alright.
But it's, it's, I'm, I'm fairly certain that the city of Savannah pays the CAT tax.
Pays into the CAT tax.
Correct, yes.
Yes, sir, they pay the same rate.
Right.
Yeah, they, they pay the same rate as the unincorporated area residents.
Right, because I think that the, the, the CAT tax is the same as our M and O.
Not, not.
Well, it's, it's not, it'll be, it, it would be a separate one on their tax bill.
Right.
Just, just as it's, if it's separate on, um, on everybody's in the unincorporated, it would be separate in the city of Savannah also.
And it, and it's not in those, it's not in those ones who have opted out?
Right, the cities of, Pooler does not have it.
Right.
Garden City does not, for half of theirs, Port, Port Wentworth opted out. That's why when they put them in, they broke every, they broke every, I don't know if it's a law or what you would call it.
It is a law.
But, but they broke the law when they put them in to start with, because that takes special legislation. The Georgia state legislators have to actually, um, change the law.
Plus, it has to come through the county commission.
Yeah.
And it didn't come this way.
Come, the request could come through the county, or they could overstep their boundaries if they chose to. But in the end, all of that would have to be approved, and the charter of CAT would have been changed through the state of Georgia to be able to allow service into any of those settings.
Right, I agree with you totally.
But, but, but.
That's what I was told.
But as far as funding goes, Savannah does fund Chatham Area Transit to the same rate that the unincorporated area residents are funding it.
Okay. Uh, the manager got us an answer somewhere.
Ask your question again, Mr. Chairman, now.
Alright.
My question.
Is, okay, Commissioner Farrell wanted to know.
So, at the current proposed rate that's on the table for discussion is one point oh five six. My question is, approximately, what kind of revenue would that produce when it goes out on the tax bills with the city of Savannah in the unincorporated area and whoever else might be partially in there? I think Garden City has like a little sliver that they pay on. But that's just from memory, so I'd, I'd have to be verified.
They do.
What do you have?
I basically have the advertisement showing the current milage rate and the rollback rate that was advertised. So, the rollback rate would be one point zero two one.
Well, that's different than the one that we're discussing, which is zero point five two eight.
That's the current milage.
The current milage is one point.
If we were to roll the milage rate back, it'd be the one point two, zero two one.
Okay. So, nobody knows the dollar amount of either any of these figures?
We'll get, we'll get that, just give a second.
You don't wait until she go figure it out?
She'll, she'll bring it right down.
So then, Mr. Manager.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
So then, from your understanding, and perhaps, you know, either the elder statesman here, um, who pays for the ferry?
The, the ferry has been, and as I understand, ferry has been incorporated into the, uh, into the Chatham Area Transit budget.
Milage, I got you.
Not in the milage, in the budget.
In the budget, yes.
Right, but the, the milage is the primary revenue source for the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're saying the same.
Yes, sir, no, I'm.
Yeah. I don't want us to be off on the wrong page.
And, Mr. Chairman, I, I think it would be helpful, you have the executive director here, if you want to ask your question. Do I, that may be helpful.
I'll do it through you.
Yeah, I'll ask Ms. Cutter to come to the microphone and podium, and she can kind of answer those questions for you.
Hello.
No, tell her what you wanted to explain, Mike.
Yeah, well, then we had questions about the, uh, the impact of, uh, the reduced milage rate on your budget.
Of course, that would be significant. Last fiscal year, CAT received a little over seventeen million dollars in the, in transit tax funding. If it's cut in half, of course, that will be significant to, in terms of the impact on operating costs. And not only that, some capital impact as well.
And also, a question as to the funding stream for the DOT and for the ferry?
Okay, the city of Savannah pays one hundred percent for the DOT shuttle. That includes operating costs and capital costs as it relates to the ferry. As the chairman spoke, the city of Savannah, through SAMI, was supposed to cover the entire cost of ferry operations and to true-up at the end of the year. For, I believe, I came in twenty-one. At that time, that was questioned, and during that fiscal year. And since then, there has not been a true-up. We are currently discussing the matter with the group. And they are in consideration of increasing P L R fees and other fees to cover the cost of the ferry services. We have presented a, an analysis of what current and future costs are for consideration. And that is being studied by the SAMI group. The SAMI group includes representation from many entities, Hoteliers, City of Savannah, the Chamber of Commerce, TLC, and others.
So, let me ask this question, Mr. Manager. Alright, go ahead, go ahead.
Question, Ms. Cutter, you said from twenty twenty-one for the, that it was supposed to have been covered?
Yes.
And, okay, thank you.
That's what the agreement calls for.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. So, at the one point oh five six, milage would be seventeen point six million in taxes levied, which is about one million dollars more than this last year.
Than the year before. Alright.
So, this year is seventeen million?
Yes.
Seventeen point six.
And what would the rollback rate produce?
The rollback rate was one point zero two one.
And what would dollar amount would that produce, same as last year?
That would be sixteen point five million.
Sixteen point five, mm-hmm. And I'm hearing zero point five two eight, so what would, what would that produce? Should that be the?
Zero point five two eight.
On behalf of the seventeen, right?
Yeah, half of seventeen point two.
Alright, let me ask, let me ask, and, and, and I, I think this is more of a procedural thing. And, and, Commissioner Kikner, are you still listening, aren't you? Commissioner Kikner? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I want to, I want to, now, I heard Ms. Cutter talk about them getting back with the city of Savannah and the other folks to true-up, right? If we pass this, then the county can actually come later on in our budget and true-up as well? Because we're getting, we're getting the ones getting shafted in this whole thing. You agree?
Yes.
Okay, so.
My, my only point was the, I didn't want to overstate.
Right.
How bad we're getting shafted there. The citizens of Savannah does pay the transit tax, is what I was saying.
Right, right, okay. And it's the unincorporated areas that bear the burden of what we're talking about. Yes, ma'am?
What would be the metrics for, I mean, how do we determine if we want to go back and make that change? Because it sounds like what Ms. Cutter is saying is that it will impact operations, it will impact capital. So, what would be the metrics for us making a determination of whether we need to go in and, and?
And true-up?
Yeah.
The rest of them trueing up? If they show up and true-up, then we can show up and true-up. That's the only thing there'd be.
Or we can, or we can stop the service.
Right.
It's their service.
Right. See, if they don't true-up, then we can just stop the service, and that'd be on them.
Mr. Chairman, you have two issues you're addressing. One is, is the budget, which, uh, the transit budget.
I understand.
And, but with the milage rate, once you adopt the milage rate, we can't go back and.
We can't go back and change the milage rate, I agree with, I, I, we understand that, don't? I think everybody understands it.
Okay.
Alright, once we set the milage rate, that's going to be the milage rate until next year, that's just.
Correct.
Alright, everybody understands that. But what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to get a, a fair shake for those who live in unincorporated areas. Because they are not receiving services, but they're paying for the service. See, and that's, 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 that's my heartburn, alright? That's where I am with this. That's why I wanted to make the amendment about it.
And, and the rem, the remit of that is, you would instruct the CAT board to provide service throughout that transit district.
Right, so now, can't we do that through doing an I G A, attach an I G A to the milage rate?
Well, the, the, the district is already set. The district is already set, it's just providing service within that district.
Right. Okay, so that means that those that they're providing service for, and they shouldn't be providing service for, would have to true-up too?
Well, that, that's, that's going to be a legal matter that you'll have to talk with the attorneys on, but the, uh, the district is already set, and, uh, you would have to instruct the transit authority to provide service throughout that district.
Plus, plus, that's got to go through a legal matter where there's a resolution put forth on the ballot, right?
No, sir.
Doesn't have to go through a resolution?
The county commission establishes the transit district.
Right, and we already did that. The whole county is a transit district.
Technically, yes, sir.
And then folks, and then folks opt out, or that's not the way it is?
That is not the way it is.
Alright, go ahead, go ahead and say it.
With total respect to the manager, that's not the way it is.
Okay.
It was, it was a collective agreement where each city was given the ability to opt in or opt out in the original creation of the Chatham Area Transit.
Right.
And to change that transit district and the taxing district, it takes an act of the state of Georgia.
Right.
It cannot be changed by the county commission.
Commissioner, I will, uh, will, uh, lean on the county attorney to provide the, the board with an opinion of that. But I think during Chairman Scott's tenure, th, this board did vote to extend the CAT district county-wide. So, we'll get you some information on that.
The, the board may have tried to do that, but it would not be done without the state doing that. And that's not, that's not the case.
That's not what they did?
No, it never got extended the CAT district.
Right, so now y'all see what the confusion is, see?
Because we, we don't control that.
Right.
And I, and I admire what you're attempting to do here, Mr. Chairman. All we control as far as Chatham Area Transit now, especially now that the state decided to jump in, is all we control is that budget at the moment. And you're utilizing the only tool we have to direct these services in the areas where the people are actually paying. So, that's.
You understand, you understand exactly what I'm trying to do.
That's, that's, and, and it's a brilliant move, and it's your only move, and our only move. If we want to have any say now, especially since the state jumped in there and restructured the whole thing, we control the purse strings at the moment. And, um, and the state has not, unless they, with this recent act, unless the state gerrymandered some district service and tax areas, there's no legally expanded areas that's. that's been done to that taxing district.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure, question.
Um, um, Ms., for the executive director, I understand that the, if I'm, uh, understanding correctly, the Sammy hasn't been paid since twenty-one?
I came in April of twenty-one and, uh, since that time, we have not received, uh, the entire coverage for ferry services. Now, there are small payments from, of course, the Weston and the Convention Center, um, to, but that's, that's a small subsidy. And as I stated, that there is, uh, conversation now, uh, to remedy that.
So, um, if you had to guesstimate, or maybe you might know the numbers, what would that dollar amount be that was missing?
Over the years or the annual cost?
Annual cost, and we could just multiply.
Uh, right, right now, ferry services is a little over two million dollars. Now, that's, of course, an escalated cost because every year the cost goes up. But the, the current cost, um, is, is a little over two million dollars. Um, now with that, um, of, of course, uh, ferry service delivery, uh, gets support through federal grants uh, for the capital side. Uh, however, uh, there's no subsidy from the federal level for the operating side.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. And I also understand that we, this commission also chipped in on the capital side at least to some degree for the new ferries.
We utilize a splash funds, yes.
Great, um, well, I'm not a math guy, but it sounds like if we're roughly saying two million annually and we have a few years that weren't accounted for, it sounds like the deficit could be made up by trueing up the Sammy.
Exactly.
If I, and that's just me using poor man's math here, um, and the understanding that, you know, an undertaking of this is, is definitely a, a big deal. Uh, but I also understand, especially when I think of my district, um, uh, the larger portion of my district are unincorporated citizens. And I want to do, I want to be fair and do right by all citizens in Chatham County. So, uh, thank you for answering the questions, Ms. Cutter.
And let me, let me remind us now, all of us sitting here, all right? Because we did this, oh, Commissioner Buford may not have been here and Noah may not have been here, but the rest of us were here. Remember when I came to you and asked you, because they were in jeopardy of the federal monies lapsing? Because the city of Savannah, during Rob Hernandez' time, re-appropriated that money. And they, in order for the federal money to lapse and go away, uh, we true up with them by giving them, uh, six hundred and forty thousand dollars. Remember that? Okay, all right, so we did that, all right? Then when the ferry money fell short, we gave them five million dollars. So see, nobody has caught up with us yet as far as doing that is concerned. See, and that's my heartburn, all right? When I say heartburn, that means these things that we thought were going to fall into place didn't fall into place. And we got stabbed in the back and somebody did something totally different, okay? And I don't mind saying that they did something totally different because they did. But nobody shows up but us. When it caved in over there, nobody showed up to fix that cave in but us, all right? And so I think it's, it comes time now that we ought to stop this and, and, and make some folks true up. Because the more and more we get deeper into this, the deeper we get into this, the more we put the burden on the unincorporated Chatham County. And so that's why you got to get to the place and Commissioner, Commissioner Kickley is correct. We're going to have to stop it. And the best way to stop it is to stop it with the tools we have in our kit, and this is one of the tools we have in our kit. That's why I brought it forward today. But I didn't do it until I made sure I had all my research and all my facts together, all right? I wanted to have it to you last, and have it last Friday because it involved some, uh, little, um, uh, uh, some litigation, uh, um, from law, okay? But you all know I wasn't here, that I couldn't do that, all right? But I think we need to stop, stay where we are until some folks who's supposed to show up, show up, all right? These folks who are, who are not supposed to be getting service, who are getting service, all right? But getting discounts? We discount now money, that money is coming from the unincorporated areas. That's where the majority of it's coming from. And we must understand that, we must get to the point where we understand this. Understand the ramification of everything I'm saying and doing. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chairman, is there any way, um, moving forward, when we make these decisions, can we have access to this information prior? Because, and my question comes from, it feels like, almost like operating blind
Right.
in this?
Right.
And it would be helpful if we had this information ahead of time so that we can, you know?
That's why, that's why I add to, uh, that's why I asked if we could add the I G A to it. Because we can put that language in the I G A. And that I G A will specify what we need to know so that, uh, a month or so ago, I asked for a complete budget, okay? But all we got was the budget for, um, para-transit. All right? And I've got the total budget for para-transit as to what we're doing, but I didn't get any of the rest of it, all right? And I still don't have that. I had, um, folks who were on the CAT board, on the former CAT board, to ask for it in writing.
Yeah, that was going to be one of my questions because I, I mean, I'm curious to know.
They didn't get it.
I'm curious to know what areas are not being serviced
Right.
as far as, I mean, just to have an idea of what the numbers are so we can know what the monetary impact is, that would be helpful.
We really need to know that. We really need to know that. That's why I asked about putting the I G A as a part of, uh, uh, the millage rate. So that those things could be reported to us monthly or, and, or, or bi-monthly or whatever kind of way you want to do it. But we need to know facts and figures, and we not getting facts and figures.
Mr. Chairman, based on what, uh, our attorney said, do we even need an I G A considering that we are responsible for transit? Based on the state law? Like, I guess a, a I G A would even be going above and beyond requesting, um, you know, like, I agree, I would like to see the budget. If we're accountable for the millage rate, I'm just saying, if it's already in Georgia law that says that it's our responsibility, why isn't it just freely given to us?
Well, I asked for it. I never got it. And I asked the, I asked the members sitting on the board, all right, to get the information so that they could give it to me, and they didn't get it. And it was requested. And it was requested, because you were one of the ones on the board that was requesting it.
So, Ms. Cutter, have you been instructed by your board not to submit that to us?
The budget was distributed to the board in our first workshop that was held in April. Um, I did not receive a request personally from the county for a copy of the budget. And the budget has been posted on our website. Neither did I receive a request from the manager's office for a, a, a copy of, of the budget. I would have definitely, um, honored that request, but the board had a copy. We started workshops in April.
Yes, ma'am, well, and I understand that and I appreciate that. I guess when, when you started, you said that you, that it was distributed to the board members, which means that, at least how I'm interpreting it, you know, with all due respect, is that we should have gotten it from our appointed members?
No, I'm, I'm not saying that. I, I thought I heard the chairman say that he asked the county appointees for the information, and they said they did not have it. Um, and, and you have appointees on the CAT board. And the budget, uh, was presented and it has been posted as well. And surely if I had gotten a request, I would have immediately sent it over directly. If it was from Chairman Ellis's office, it would have come directly, uh, to him. It would have been no reason for us to withhold the budget document.
Well, I, I tried to work through.
No reason at all.
I worked, I tried to work through the, through the commissioners and the board members
Yes, sir.
that were appointed, that's how, that's how I do business.
And it was requested to be sent over here.
All right, the man who requested is telling you, he requested it be sent over here.
I didn't request it, but that was another.
Yeah.
Two other commissioners, uh, not, board member did request it.
Not of me, Mr. Chairman, they may have asked the board administrator, and she's very good with that, but I was not asked.
I wasn't, I wasn't saying it was you or who or what, all right? Because
Yes, sir.
I'm just saying, me directly to you or directly to the administrator or somebody over there, that's not the way I operate, all right? The way I operate is through the appointees
Yes.
on the board. And I asked them and to make sure they got those information for me. Like, for instance, I asked for, what is the cost? Of the complete cost of the ferry? All right, especially after we put the five million dollars in there, all right? And, and now to, it's disingenuous to say that was, um, that was, um, what you call them thing? Um, splash money?
Yeah.
That was county money. That money belonged to the county. But because we were trying to work together to get things together, I came and asked the board to, to put that five million dollars in place so that those ferries we wouldn't lose. Because one of the things you've got to note is as we deal with the federal government, if any entity that we're involved with falls short, you don't fall at the bottom of the list, you fall off. And we were instructed by our, by our handlers in D C to make sure we don't fall off. So that's why I came and asked for the six hundred and forty thousand dollars, remember me telling you that? And that's why I came and asked about the five million dollars, because we've got too many things in play, all right? Just, what day is it, Thursday? Just Tuesday, all right? If you go and look at, um, and if you don't have it, I'll make sure you all get it. You got the, you got the email from Chris, right?
Yes.
All right? Uh, there are four different areas that we've got eleven million dollars for Hunter in one place. We've got thirteen million dollars in another place. We've got, uh, twenty-six million dollars for the Combat Red in the Center. And we've got another, um, twelve million dollars, all right? For, uh, things at, 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 um, the one sixty-fifth. All those things are tied together. And we've got too much going for us to, to, to get knocked down, like stuff like this, but small stuff, because people didn't do what they were supposed to do. So that's why I wanted to find out, I asked the manager. If the rest of them step up and right side up, then we can step up and right side up later on, all right? And I'm, I'm getting a nod that we can. Uh, I know Amy going, going to beat me up because that makes.
Well, as I said, Chairman.
She had to go find that money.
You can always amend budgets, but.
We can always amend budgets, but we cannot amend the millage rate. And, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about budgets, I'm not talking about a, a millage rate, all right? All right, so now, have, have we cleared up everything now? Have we, you got?
Chairman.
All right, sir?
I'm reading the agreement between the city of Savannah, Chatham area transit and the Savannah, Savannah area, area Chamber of Commerce. The, um, agreement between everyone about the convention transportation water ferry system. It was signed on two thousand, in two thousand and eighteen. And let's see here. It's a very, very, very long article.
Correct.
And, well, the one I'm looking at is not actually online, is not actually signed. But it would be the one from two thousand and eighteen that was signed where Savannah Savannah agrees.
To collect the tax.
Yes, along with, um, the others that I just mentioned.
Right.
Tourism by the Transportation Area Convention. Collect the tax and pay, and pay for the service.
Mm-hmm.
So it's definitely something that I don't know how or why they would back out of it other than the fact that we'd let them, let them do it because you're, you're spot on with what you're doing here.
Right.
Because the amount that you're recommending, cutting back is, equates to how many millions?
Eight and a half.
And if, and if, and if they true up based upon, um, like, like Commissioner, um, Whitley said, if we get everybody to true up, that would cover that.
Yes.
There wouldn't be a deficit at all.
How much does yours cut out of it, eight and a half million?
Eight point eight million.
Eight point eight.
Why can't, could we come up with something that rolls it back two million dollars? From what they've, two million off of the, leaving it where it is, other words, instead of eight million?
All right, let me ask, let me ask, um, let me ask, let me ask the finance people, the, the, the rollback rate is what?
The rollback rate is one point zero two one.
One point zero two one?
Which produces sixteen point five million.
Sixteen?
Point five.
As compared to seventeen point something?
Right.
So that would do, that would do what you're asking, yeah?
That's one mil.
That's one mil.
That's a, that's, that's a little, that's a little over one million?
Yes.
If we go rather than, rather than going with what I'm recommending, the, um, zero point five two eight, go to the rollback, which is one point?
Zero two one.
Zero two one? That would be right, right around, that'd be right around the two million dollars, but
That's one million.
One million?
Seventeen, uh, right at seventeen million.
Right at seventeen? For the rollback?
No. Give us one second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yeah, o- okay, because I know I got everybody up there.
Right.
Yeah, I knew I got everybody up there.
Chairman, I think it might even be worth doing a recess where they can make sure their numbers are correct and rolling, rolling it back, but just enough to offset the two million that Savannah's supposed to contribute.
So, so, let me ask, let me ask this question based upon what you just said. So rope, suppose we roll it back to one mil? All right, because you told me the rollback was one point something, right?
One point two one.
One point two?
Oh, two one.
All right, so suppose we roll it back to one point?
Yeah, I would write sixteen.
It'd be at sixteen, it'd be at sixteen rather than the seventeen point eight, right?
Seventeen point six.
Sixteen, seventeen point six.
So about one point five mil.
One point five million would be our rollback. That's what you were suggesting?
So then, then let's take it down to nine?
Okay, let's take, let's take it down.
Point eight.
Let's take it down. I, I see where you're coming from now, y'all can, I mean, yeah, yeah.
Dean speaking in barber terms.
Yeah, we, in barber terms, what we can, what we can do is.
Mr. Chairman, can we, can we take a break for one second?
All right.
I want to make sure, uh, so is it, you'll go to reduce the millage rate to net that two million dollars?
Yes, that would be it, instead of six million dollars, to two million.
Right.
Can, can you give us a second to, and I get?
Can, can you stay in a recess until they put some stuff together and come back? Where is Alan, he still over here?
No, Alan's.
Alan gone for the day? Alan, Alan's so quick at this stuff. Give us, give us, give you a few, all right, we're going to take a.
We have a motion on it.
And then got this information, then, then we could have everything lined up for Friday and we could pick one of the millage rates.
You, you gotta have, you gotta have this, you gotta have this in by, uh, August first.
August first, so Friday, we don't have a meet, a meeting this coming Friday.
No, fall and Friday.
Yeah, we need to have the tax.
That's got to be in before, before. Because in, in the first, in the first, like a Thursday or next?
The first is Friday.
The first, is that Friday?
Friday.
And it's got to be in. It can't be gone, we got to have it before Friday.
That's why we're having a call meeting, right?
Friday would be, we could do it Friday, but it'd have to be Friday.
Yeah.
Friday is the first.
Friday's first.
Hmm?
I'll be gone on the first.
I know, some other folk.
I could attend if we did it at three o'clock, but.
Listen, I, I, I understand you, all right? And I, and I see you.
Mr. Chairman, can we address the other item while Ms. Davis?
Okay, yeah, we can do that, let's, let's go ahead and do that. We, we don't come back to this, all right? We're going to take a short break from that one and let's go on down to the item number two.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, we do still have a motion on the floor.
All right, so.
We do not have a second on the amendment to the.
We don't have a second on amendment.
So we will need to vote on the existing, um, motion that was already, already on the floor since we didn't have a second for the amendment.
So can, can we just table it for, can we just, can it just be, Reggie? Martin?
Yes.
I would say we just vote down the original.
Well, yeah, your question is, is whether or not
Right, right.
do you have to take action on the properly motioned second? I mean, te- technically you can go, you can go. I mean, te- technically you can go, you can go and take a recess, it's just the fact that you do have to, you do have to act on it, or, and, or if you want to amend on it, uh, as well. But you can, a recess will not affect it if you just took a brief recess to come back.
Uh, from what I'm hearing, I think, uh, a motion to, uh, uh, deny is, is appropriate.
So I, I think we should vote down the first one that is on the table.
Since it's on the table, then.
And then go to recess, motion to recess, and then we circle back in.
Everybody understand what we do?
Yeah.
All right?
That would be proper under Robert's rules.
Okay, that'd be proper under Robert's rule, good. All right, everybody understand? All right, please cast your votes.
No.
Nope, nope, nope. Who I'm waiting on now, um, all right? Seven? Oh, I got seven.
Well, mine not, mine not working.
You hitting reset?
No, I'm hitting no.
There it is.
There it is, all right. It's voted down.
That was the next button I never saw.
In the meantime, while, while, while Ms. Davis is getting those figures for us, let's go to request vote approval of a month-to-month contract for inmate and medical services with Correct Health, Chatham County LLC. Is there a motion?
I need an extra minute.
Okay.
Motion.
Probably move a second, all right? All right, ready for unreadiness now. What's your unreadiness?
I'm not clear on the month-to-month, what is it currently?
Currently, uh, this chairman and commission, uh, we've had this contract with Correct Health since 2016, and the contract expired. Uh, we issued an RMP, uh, the, uh, latter part of April, and they've been working their way through the proposals. There were a lot of questions that came up that we had to answer for the vendors. And, uh, the contract expired, uh, June thirtieth. And the current contract has agreed to do a month-to-month with that minor increase until we get a new contract awarded. Uh, the team is currently reviewing the proposals, they've been submitted. Uh, we've got proposals from three firms. Uh, we've got a, 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 a committee put together that's reviewing those, and hopefully we'll have a, uh, a vendor that we will be able to, uh, recommend approval, uh, in September.
Thank you.
All right, COVID? All right? Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kickley, I vote yes, I heard it, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we take a recess, uh, ten-minute recess.
All right.
Second.
Do we still need to go to exec session for something?
I don't know why they put exec session on here, because we don't have anything to go to exec session for.
Okay, so just.
Unless somebody, yeah, no exec session. That just goes to a short recess, all right, until, until Ms. Davis can get back? Hit your button before you leave.
For the phone?
Yes. All right, we'll be back with you.
I'm sure they got.